Yeah, brother Steve from Hollywood, California. Woo, yes, we are excited. We are fired up tonight because I've been waiting for this night. You know what? For like a while. Why you say that? Because I have. I honestly have been waiting for this night for a while. Now, we're here in the studio. Things are great. If you're watching this video right now, I need you to do me a favor. Share, share, and share. Let's keep sharing this video. Let's get the word out. Let's let people know that we are here with the one and only Attorney Amos Smith. Now, different from everybody I've interviewed, you're gonna find out why he's different, okay? Attorney Amos Smith, much more coming up. Brother Steve from Hollywood, stay tuned. We are so glad, happy, and excited to be here on tonight, a wonderful, wonderful Thursday night across the country. We've got the one and only Attorney Amos Smith. People are commenting already. We're glad. Good evening, Dr. Lanell Perry. And she's out there watching. She's also a candidate for Judiciary Board for the Church of God in Christ. We thank God for her. And all of our saints and friends out there watching. Missouri, where you at? Atlanta, where you at? Let's hear from you. You're gonna learn some stuff tonight you've never heard on no interview we've ever done here on our broadcast. But first of all, we gotta bring in the bishop. I would stand, but you won't see me on camera. Let's bring him in all the way from the show me state, the one and only Bishop Timothy Smith. How you doing, Bishop?
God bless you, brother Steve. Always a pleasure to be with you, my friend.
Man, you know, the Smith brothers, you know, that y'all come in big numbers, the Smith brothers, y'all. Bishops, 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 everybody passes, and you know, woo, the Smith brothers on fire tonight.
Well, brother Steve, you're right. We come in big numbers, and I'm the youngest of 11. And what I like to always tell people is that my parents were perfectionists, and when they finally got it right, they stopped.
So wait a minute. Now, you know, I know your brother gonna have something to say behind that one now.
I'm sure he will. I'm sure he will.
Oh, my Lord. We got the bishops in the house tonight. The people are commenting. Oh, 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 well, there we go. Elect my brother, Attorney Amos Smith. And I know Bishop Smith's team is out there doing great things. God bless you from Youngstown, Ohio, out there watching our broadcast right now. People are coming onboard to watch our broadcast. Take this time, let's take this opportunity to introduce my dear friend from many, many years. We've worked on his campaign with others, but he's a great friend of mine. And I thank God for all the things that he's done for the Church of God in Christ. And tonight, you're gonna find out some of the great things that he's done for the Church of God in Christ. We've got people calling us right now from Northern California. We're on the air live right now. But saints and friends, let's go ahead and introduce your wonderful, shall I say, your little brother. But he's one of the great men of the Church of God in Christ right now.
All right. Well, thank you, brother Steve. What a joy it is to introduce such a tremendous man of God, such as the Attorney Amos Smith. The Attorney Amos Smith has faithfully served on the trustee board of the Church of God in Christ. He is seeking his fourth term on the trustee board. Currently, he serves as the budget chair for the trustee board. And certainly, every board, I like to say, needs an attorney. And Attorney Amos Smith is the only attorney that is running for election on the trustee board. Every board, brother Steve, needs an attorney. And what a tremendous and outstanding attorney Amos Smith is. He's the budget chair, and everyone understands, brother Steve, that we're in the midst of a pandemic. Companies were downsizing. Companies were laying employees off. Revenues for the church, like most organizations, were substantially cut. And when the revenues were cut, many people thought that the church would be in the red, that employees would be laid off and downsized. But thank God for Attorney Amos Smith, who is the budget chair for the trustee board. As a result of his wisdom and his ingenuity, the church, although its revenue was substantially cut, the church has operated in the black all year. The church has not had to lay off or downsize any employees. And we, we're operating in the black when most people thought we would operate in the red. So thank God for a buddy, Amos Smith, who was able to guide and make decisions and help and show leadership with the budget decisions.
Well, you know, there's no other time now than a great time now. Let's bring him in, the budget attorney, the one and only Dr. Amos Smith. How you doing, sir?
God bless you, brother Steve. It is so nice to be with you, my friend, my friend, brother Steve.
Yes, that's my buddy. We ain't gonna talk long enough because we got a budget and the time limits. I wanna make sure I stay on the budget. But you know, Bishop Smith, you said, we just kicked this off right. You said it right. Because of his ingenuity, his experience as an attorney, nobody, I mean, because of this man working with our presiding bishop and our general board, you helped save people's jobs. You helped save people's livelihoods. You helped keep people eating. You helped keep the church operating that we can maintain during this time. You know where some of the, 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 the financial grant money from the government is. Do we got, we gonna talk about all that church business, but we only gonna tell you that much church business because that's not no business until you come to us soon. But you know what I'm saying? We gonna talk about that. Attorney Smith, Bishop Smith, we gonna see you in just a few moments. Let's bring him in. The one and only Attorney Amos Smith. How you doing on tonight?
God bless you, my friend, brother Steve. I'm doing well. Good to be with you. Great to be with you. And thank you for this opportunity, brother Steve. Appreciate you too much.
Always so much, always, always. Let's get right into it. Let's talk about some of the things that you had to do, you know, without discussing the church's business, but tell me some of the creative things as the budget chair. You're running for reelection, reelection for the trustee board. Now, if that's a crucial position because you know the numbers, you know the budget. Let's talk about that.
Brother Steve, just on the outset, I wanna make one, a few comments. Experience matters.
Yes.
Experience matters. And I'm the only attorney on the National Board of Trustees. Matter of fact, I'm the only attorney running for the National Board of Trustees.
Wow.
You know that everyone always need what? An attorney.
An attorney.
Need an attorney and a CPA and, 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 and a pastor, right? You need those two things. Don't leave home without those.
That's right.
Brother Steve, I've been practicing law for 29 years. 29 years I've been in the trenches. I've been a litigator, transactional experience, you name it. I have a background in taxation, accounting, real estate. As a matter of fact, as the budget chair person for the National Board of Trustees, my experience prepared me for the pandemic. My experience prepared me for the pandemic. I have been the budget chair for the last four years. And you may recall back in February of 2020, we weren't sure what this COVID-19 was gonna be. We thought maybe it would be a shutdown for 30 days or 60 days, but we didn't expect the whole year. But way back in February of 2020, I started meeting with the National Board of Trustees, the Presiding Bishop, the General Board, the National Office of the Church, and we developed a plan of how to make it through a storm. And it was my job as the budget chair to steer the ship during the midst of a pandemic storm. And I am glad to say that because of God's grace, God has blessed the Church of God in Christ. And with strong leadership, with the experience, we are operating in the black. And I'll share more details with you later, brother Steve. But I thank God for being good to the Church of God in Christ.
Attorney Smith, tell me about your platform as you're running for reelection.
Sure. Brother Steve, my, my platform is very, very simple. Experience matters. Experience matters. That's my theme. Experience matters. Experience matters when it comes to managing a budget. Experience matter when it comes to the management of our property that's owned by the Church of God in Christ. As a matter of fact, one thing I have been doing for the last 25 years, and I wanna do it more with the national church, we've encouraged our people to give a tithe at death. What is that, brother Steve?
Hold on, a tithe a day?
A tithe at death.
At death, okay. Tell me about that.
A tithe at death. For 25 years, we have been training our people to remember the church in your will. When you pass away, remember the church. Remember the ones that have been there for you. Oftentimes, our loved ones have property, homes, they have investments, they have, you name it, buildings, and they forget to leave a will, or they may leave it to their children. And if they would just educate this, hey, you could be a blessing to the church. Give a percentage of that wealth to the church. And that's done by other denominations all the time. The Catholics, Catholics, they do it. The Baptists, they do it. They educate their members about the importance of planning ahead of time, having a will, having a trust. And in addition to that, oftentimes, they do it for free, but they encourage you to be a blessing to the church and to the ministry. And that's one thing that we as a black church should do more often. It's called giving the church a tithe at death. Okay, brother Steve?
Yes, sir.
In addition to that, I wanna focus more on revenue generation. I wanna use government grants, corporate sponsorships to increase our ministry for home and for mission, education. And there are a lot of educational programs that we can do where that the tab or the bill can be paid by the government or by corporate sponsors. There are food programs that we can do to help the ones that are hunger, hungry. Matter of fact, the USDA give a ton of grants. And oftentimes, we don't apply for those grants because we're not aware of it.
Let me say this real quick. So you have access to those grants. You know where they are.
Brother Steve, I can find the money. I can find the money, but you must be prepared to receive the money.
Hold on, let's cut to the, let me put your website, or let me put how people can reach you right now on the screen. Give me that, give me that number to your, your law firm, and they, they gotta do business, but give me that number right now.
Sure. Phone number to the office is 312-551-0496. 312-551-0496. Or you can go to our website. It's very, very simple. wwwattorneyamosmith.com. wwwattorneyamosmith.com.
Okay, let me let you go back into your platform you were speaking about because I want people, I want people to, to be able to realize you have access and you know where the money is.
Sure.
Their church is ready to go, and their organization is ready to roll right now. We're gonna implement some of these things to our national church, but some people are ready to roll right now. And we wanna put that on the screen. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Attorney Smith.
Sure. So what, what I believe that focuses on, on different streams of revenue. Corporate sponsorship, federal and state grants that can be used to do ministry. Ministries such as Feed Our People, but you have to be ready to receive these money. And oftentimes, what, that the problem happens is that when the money is available, we're not legally set up to properly apply for the grants. Um, most churches, well, not most, but every church, you have a CDC, a community development corporation. Basically, it's a, it's a ministry that you set up to do, to do a program to help people. Programs such as education for GED, program for unwed mothers, program for reentry if a person's been in prison, uh, programs for education, you name it. There are a ton, there's a ton of money available for these programs. And oftentimes, we, they are not applied for because you do not meet the qualifications.
You know what? Let me say this. We wanna say God bless you to Bishop Derek W. Hutchins, and we gotta find a way to get him on our broadcast. Bishop Hutchins, I'd love to get you on our broadcast.
Bishop, good to see you.
Uh, and also, you know, Timothy Smith, the fans out there watching and viewing right now. And basically, if you wanna know where some of this money is, make a comment in the box. If your church, call, pick up the phone, matter of fact, share this video right now. Share this video. Somebody, now I see, I see the shares going up already. Share this video right now. He's gonna tell you some information where some of this money is, and you can call his office, 312-551-0496, to get your hands on some of this financial resources. Bishop Hutchins, we gotta get you on this broadcast. I have something great that we can do together to get you on this broadcast. You know, there's so much resources out there. So you're saying you are willing to help me. Okay, somebody says, show me the money. All right, you are willing to help people find out where this government, you know, I was just driving down the street today, and looking at things and realizing how much money. I, I know one organization that got a check in the pandemic for like $100,000. And some of this money is government grant money that's available, that's just sitting there.
I mean, you, you can do a search for government grants, and you'll see all the, all the grants that are available. And, and, and many of those grants never applied for because people do not, they're not aware of them, or they don't go through the process. But the first thing is to make sure that you are legally set up
Okay.
to, to, to receive the money.
Well, now, this gonna sound kinda crazy, but a lady in Compton got a grant to go up and down the streets of Compton to pick up dog poop. When I heard about that, and she pay, and she lived well for years, a grant, this crazy stuff. But your churches have got to be set up, has got to be set up. Bishop Hutchins says, Attorney Smith has blessed many churches with their legal problems and tax difficulties. Let's get into some of your experience with taxes and things like that, Attorney Smith.
Sure. Um, initially, I started off working for two of the most, two of the largest tax and accounting firms in the world, Arthur Andersen and Ernst &amp; Young. Um, I, I have experience in taxation, I have experience in auditing. And actually, I worked on a lot of corporate returns, federal returns, state returns, 990s for nonprofits, work with trusts, work. So all, 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 all that work prepared me to be a servant for God's people. Because once I left corporate America, I still, I still continue to do tax work. But what I did was, I made sure that I serviced up clients that were able to afford my services. But in addition to that, I, I do services for clients that are not as wealthy as others. But everyone need a good tax professional. They need accounting work. They need these type of services. So I make sure that I'm available for my client. And I make sure that, matter of fact, I'll tell you a quick story. I had a church this past summer. This past summer, they receive a tax bill for over $50,000. Ask me why, brother Steve.
Why? Why?
They receive a tax bill for over $50,000 for missing a debt. They missed a deadline. And they hired, worked with another attorney to help them out, and you know, they, they got, they, they, it just didn't, it wouldn't work out. They called me, brother Steve. They called me, and I worked on that matter during the pandemic. I called the assessor's office. I called the attorneys. I worked all the way up to the food chain until I resolved that matter. And brother Steve, once I resolved that matter, but keep in mind that they had a tax bill for over $50,000. Ask me how much they paid.
Well, I wanna ask you, how much they paid?
You, to, to me or to the assessor?
To the assessor. I know you got a little Easter money.
The assessor, they did not pay one penny. We, we were able to get a tax bill of $50,000 thrown out.
I'm getting my tax papers together right now for you, so you can just go ahead and get this stuff tied and taken care of. And, and it goes back into, you know, Tila and Smith, you know, we gonna have her on tomorrow night. Get ready, Tila, and share this.
Friend, Tila and Smith, all the way from Atlanta, Georgia. God bless you, Tila.
Smith is on and that, you know, it's just, it's just an easy conversation. And you were a part of the dream team with the Passion and Elders Council when Bishop Hutchins was the chairman back then. Let me ask you this. So I think you, we've talked about what you bring to the table. But what else do you bring to the table? Since you're the only attorney, we gotta have an attorney on the trustee board. So what else do you bring to the table so people will really know?
Sure. Uh, uh, brother Steve, I've been on the trustee board for the past 12 years. For the past 12 years, as an attorney, I have reviewed contracts, I review documents, I review leases, I reviewed agreements. I review all types of documents and make sure that I was protecting the best interest of the church. Now, I'm not gonna share my hourly rate, but it's between $1 and $1,000, okay? And we'll, we'll leave it at that. But ask me, over the last 12 years of doing services for the church, ask me how much have I charged the national church?
Well, what was your bill to the national church?
A number no man can remember. I charged the church one dime.
Wow. So you have helped people stay in their homes. You've helped keep people's jobs at Mason Temple. You've helped keep people's jobs in the national church when there's no conventions, nothing going on. The, uh, uh, the assessments and the money's coming in were real low. You were able to budget chair and figure out how we can move stuff around.
Not, cut in half. Cut in half. Could you imagine as a family of four losing half of your income? But your expenses remain the same. So we had to do more with less. We looked at pandemic eye to eye. When I say we, I mean, the Presiding Bishop, the General Board, the National Board of Trustees, the Financial Secretary, the Treasurer, the COO, the General Assembly, Budget Committee, and myself. We looked at pandemic eye to eye, and we did not blink. We did not blink. What we did was, we did an assessment of what things needed to be paid. And we made sure that we maintained every employee of the Church of God in Christ. The Church of God in Christ National Office has about 100 employees.
Whoa.
We maintained 95% of those employees because a few left because they got other jobs. It wasn't because we, we laid, we laid them off.
Yes.
And during the entire pandemic, from, from when it started in January of 2020 to the present time, we'll always pay bi-weekly salary. We always pay, withheld the income taxes, the payroll taxes. We pay the health insurance. Brother Steve, could you imagine not having health insurance during a pandemic?
I had a toothache the other day, and my side was hurting, but I felt good. I had some health insurance. Went on down there and got hooked up. You make these things happen.
So that, so the Church of, the Church of God in Christ is in the black because of strong leadership. Brother Steve, experience matters.
What do you, what, 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 where do you see us going in the future? You know, and let me ask you this. What sets you apart from the other trustee board members? We love them all. And I know our trustee board are strong, and they stand together. But what sets you apart? I know you're an attorney. I know you're the budget chair, but let's talk about, so the delegates know what sets you apart.
Sure. Let me first say this, brother Steve. You know, I, I, I support the National Board of Trustees. I have a great team. I'll be blessed and honored to have each trustee reelected. I enjoyed serving with them. My Chairman, Bishop Dwight Walls, and an entire member of the National Board of Trustees. We are a team. Now, what sets me aside is this. We are, every trustee has their own talent. But my experience of 29 years of being in the trenches, fighting for small and local churches, fighting for pastors, I know what it means when a pastor receives a foreclosure notice. I know what it, matter of fact, during the pandemic, I defended some churches that were in, in the midst of being evicted, and I stopped the eviction. During the pandemic, I worked with a lot of small churches, and I've take, I've taken that experience and that mindset, and I, I use it on the national level for the national church. But I have not forgotten the small, local churches.
Now, 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 let me say this. Speaking about local, because I'm going a different direction here. What advice can you give to that local pastor right now? Let's just call it out. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say this question real slow. But I know you're sharp, and you're quick, and you think about it. But what advice can you give to a local pastor with a membership of maybe 39, 40 people? You're not back in service. The offering pan is not low, but it's way low. What advice can you give to local pastors to say, create this source of income, or do this with some of your property? You know, what? Because right now, I'm not gonna lie, a lot of pastors are discouraged. A lot of pastors are hurt. And I, and I made a comment a couple of weeks ago, and people heard my comment to a lot of pastors who are worshiping in schools and civic halls prior to COVID. Right now, when we come back, the kids gonna be in, in school first before they let you talk about believe I testify on Sunday morning. So we gotta be creative. You, I know a church in LA, he owns the church. He owns the building, and he rents it out to seven churches every Sunday. They got 11 o'clock, 8 o'clock, 10 o'clock, and every, every other hour is a different dominant, but they got a building. So what advice could you give to a local pastor right now to encourage him and give him some help of what he can do to get his resources up?
Brother Steve, that, that's an excellent question. And one thing I will say upfront is this. First, every local pastor, my heart goes out to you because a lot of churches were not prepared for the pandemic. Unfortunately, a lot of churches did not have the technology. They didn't have the media. They didn't have the internet, and they weren't prepared for the pandemic. So my heart goes out to every local pastor that is suffering. And what I will say is this. There, there, there is an other side. There's another side to this pandemic. If you, if, if you would just be mentally tough with the grace of God, try to keep your members together. Keep the members together. Meet the best way you can. If it's on Zoom, if it's on Facebook, if it's on conference call, meet. In addition to that, give people different types of platforms as to how they can give. So you, you have a lot of older members, and I work with churches all the time, even during the pandemic. I did a class called Reentry, working with churches to be ready to reenter during the pandemic. But you have a lot of churches that all they know is the traditional of people bringing their offering to the church. So what you have to do is realize that you have, you have a lot of older saints that are still old fashioned, and they wanna drop it off. Allow that to still happen. Uh, allow them to give, give a fight, allow them to give a credit card, debit card. But also, in addition to that, try to expand your ministry. Now, by us not being in the four walls, now your new church is without walls. And if, and if you can have a presence where that you give other people that are not part of your local church an opportunity to give. an opportunity to give and, and, you know, encourage them to support you. But I, I would just encourage every pastor that's struggling, going through, do your best to stay in there. God is, God is faithful and just, and God is going to see you through this pandemic. And there is a, another side after this pandemic.
Let me ask you this question real quick, and then I'm going to get into where do you see the future of our church going? But, um, are there programs or is there creative ways we can create programs for some of our widows out there? We've lost a lot of bishops, a lot of pastors, what programs do you think that we can create to help some of our widows?
Brother Steve, you know, that's an excellent question because what I will say is this. Even during the pandemic, um, we made sure as the National Church that we, uh, pay the, the widow pension benefits for our widows of, of former national officers or General Board members.
Okay.
Which we did today. We, we paid one hundred percent of those. And one thing I will encourage every local church is that oftentimes, a, a small church does not have the revenue to generate enough money to save toward a pension or a retirement plan. But we, we encourage pastors, when you're young, when you're healthy, take out a life insurance. Um, and make your, make your wife the beneficiary. And oftentimes, you know, if, if you, if you're in good health and if you're younger, you know, a, 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 a term policy for a hundred grand, make more than twenty-five dollars a month. The key, you have to do that when you're young. If you don't do it when you're young, when you get older, you know, uh, it, it'd be much more expensive to get that policy. And if you have, if you have pre-existing medical condition, uh, uh, hypertension, diabetes, you name it, then you may not even qualify for it. So I would encourage every local church, if you can, to, to get a life insurance policy for your pastor and make the pastor's spouse the beneficiary. In addition to that, if you have the budget, you should see about during the pandemic to set up your, set up a ministry, like a community development corporation incorporated, get a five, get, get a five oh one C three, so you can qualify for grants. Because oftentimes, people want grants, but you have to be legally set up to get to receive the grants. Like you get, get that up, a not-for-profit corporation through your state. You want to have your five oh, five oh one C three and have your books in order. Then you can legally apply and go to these different, uh, sites to apply for grants. And, you know, Catholic Charities is the biggest community development corporation in the world. You know, they, they, they get grants for everything because they're legally set up to do that. And if we can make sure that our local ministries are set up so that they can qualify for grants. You know, I, I, years ago, I had a young man that he had a passion for, uh, young people. So in, in, on, in the Chicago North Side, the Green and Green, he, he sent a five oh one C three, we helped him out. And he received a, a fifty thousand dollar grant. And, and that money was to use for the summer. And his job was to tutor young men during the summer. So what he did was, the program was usually from, uh, ten AM to two o'clock. They'll, they'll come, they do some, they do good tutoring, they play basketball, um, they, they did some fun activity. But he was able to pay salary to about, uh, about seven people during the summer. And so really, he paid their salaries, he paid the taxes of seven people, uh, for the summer by getting a grant for fifty thousand dollars. And it was only for two months.
Where do you see the future of our church post-pandemic?
I am very excited about the Church of God in Christ. Um, we, we serve the God that can get us through the pandemic. And the, these going to be, these are exciting times for the Church of God in Christ. Let me first say this. We have been blessed to have one of the greatest leaders in Church God in Christ, Bishop Charles Edward Blake.
Yes.
And I, 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 I support his, uh, retirement, I support Lady May Blake. And we've had great leadership for the last thirteen years. Uh, this is an exciting time because in about a month, the General Assembly will get together and we're going to first vote for twelve men to be on our General Board. And keep in mind that we have six vacancies. That's unheard of in the Church of God in Christ. Vacancies in the Church of God in Christ. In addition to that, once we, um, uh, vote for a new General Board, we're going to select a new Presiding Bishop. And that's going to be exciting. But one thing I can say is this, the new Presiding Bishop will have a lot on his hands. Going through a pandemic, managing, uh, manage the finances of the church, dealing with legal matters, even the spiritual matter. Brother Steve, people are hurt or in pain. Everyone, everyone has a loved one that has been stricken or affected by COVID. And, and some of the experts are saying that we may be in COVID for another year or two because even with the vaccine, you know, you know, that's moving pretty slow. And I, I heard someone say the other day that we may not get the entire country vaccinated until twenty twenty-three. So the Presiding Bishop and General Board have to deal with all those matters. And experience matters because it, with the new Presiding Bishop and the General Board, by having an, an experienced attorney, an experienced trustee, an experienced budget chair like me, I can make sure that the church is moving in the right direction and we're, and we're, we're still in the black and that our finances are tight. So I'm excited about what God has in store for our church. And I, and I would love the opportunity to serve four more years to, to finish and complete the work that we've started.
You know, I'm going to bring in your brother as we get ready to do our closing comments, and then we're going to let you have the last words as you appeal to the delegates out there watching our broadcast right now.
Bishop Smith? Yes, sir.
Attorney.
All I can say, Brother Steve, is wow, wow. That was just magnificent and awesome to hear Attorney Amos Smith, the wealth of experience and knowledge uh, that he has and how he has been a blessing, uh, to so many in the body of Christ, uh, Brother Steve. Uh, he's helped save jobs, he's, uh, helped people keep their health insurance. He's helped pastors stay in their local churches. I mean, this is magnificent. Uh, you know, one, one of the things about, uh, Attorney Amos Smith, he is an exceptional man of God. And he's an exceptional attorney. In fact, uh, Brother Steve, he has what we call in the legal profession an L L M degree. That is an advanced law degree. So he's not just an attorney, but he's a super attorney because he has that advanced degree. And he's just a tremendous man of God. He's the only attorney running for election on the trustee board. Brother Steve, every board needs an attorney. Wow, is all I can say.
You know, I, 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 I was so in the first two minutes. You know, uh, it's a blessing, it's a joy. If you're out there watching, thank God for him. Every board needs an attorney. Uh, Tila and Smith, she said, Amos Smith is needed back on the Board of Trustees. And, and we're going to talk about Tila and Smith on tomorrow. We want to make sure she gets back on the Board of Trustees as well. Uh, it's, this is a great time. It's an exciting time and we are excited. Um, Attorney Smith, your closing words and comments to the delegates.
Thank you, Brother Steve. Um, I want to first thank, uh, to the Chairman of the General Assembly, Presiding Bishop, the General Board, and to all the delegates of the Church of God in Christ. I want to first thank you for allowing me to serve for the past twelve years on the National Board of Trustees and as the Budget Chair for the past four years. It has been an honor to serve the National Church. In addition to my service, by me serving, um, I want to thank, uh, God for my lovely wife, Dr. Lisa Warner-Smith, and my son. Because oftentimes, as a, as a trustee, as an attorney, I'm often traveling and my family have been very supportive of me. So I thank God for my family. And I look forward to the opportunity to be, to being reelected to the National Board of Trustees on February twenty-third, uh, twenty twenty-one. And because experience matters, and I, and you, we want to keep at least one attorney on the National Board of Trustees, Attorney Amos Smith for the National Board of Trustees. God bless you. I look forward to serving you for four more years.
Well, I think, and that's, from Hollywood, California, Brother Steve, don't get to reelect Attorney Amos Smith. And he's going to be coming back on our broadcast. So to talk about some of those resources, how about you want to do that one time, Attorney?
Brother Steve, I'll be glad to. I'll be glad to.
Let's talk about some of those resources too that you have available to the people. Vote Attorney Amos Smith, reelect him for the National Board of Trustees from Hollywood, California. Brother Steve, so have a great night. Enjoy yourself. February twenty-third is the big day. God bless you. We'll see y'all soon.